...bunch of money, and I would think that we would keep this program as a future capital improvement program when we have the funding to accomplish this. And I think it's a great thing to aspire to.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
All the news is not quite so bad. My understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that the current flood insurance maps do not take into account the Wooddale Itasca Reservoir, additional 17,000 acre foot of storage, and the counties in the process of updating their maps, which should decrease the flood zone in Wooddale.
Correct. You are exactly correct, that the reservoir is not on the current maps, and the reservoir should result in the lowering of the base flood elevation and therefore decrease in the flood plain in town.
Yeah. I would just like to say, I mean, the whole process, okay, in trying to reduce this started many years ago, okay? And I think for the city, even to just hold the Class Five, they've done a tremendous job. You know, all the staff, all the people, all the members, current members, former members of the Stormwater Committee, you know, everybody's done a great job on it. And I'd just like to say, because I live on the creek, and I pay, you know, I have to have flood insurance, and, you know, I appreciate, believe me, I appreciate, because it is an extra burden, you know, in addition to not only having to pay for your homeowner's insurance and everything else. You know, you've got that problem, okay, or having to pay that. And now, because they did change the rules, if you have a mortgage, you know, like ironically, when I first got my mortgage, they didn't require me to have flood insurance, but I had it already. About a year or so ago, when there was a big uproar, when they came out with the new dimensions, and people that weren't in the flood plain all of a sudden were in the flood plain, apparently the government sent something to all the financial institutions, because mine came back and says, "Well, you've gotta have flood insurance." And I said, "Well, I do have flood insurance." "Well, no, you've gotta have flood insurance through us." And, you know, it's kinda like went round and round. But the bottom line is that what the city has done has really been very beneficial to everybody. And I know, as a homeowner, as a resident, I appreciate it very much, and I'm content with the Class Five, just making sure we keep up with that, because I would agree to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars potentially for a $2,400 a year savings. It's not worth, at this point in time, it's not worth it. We've got too many other things we need to worry about.
Well put. I certainly agree that we have worked really hard to get where we are today. And with all that being said, Mr. Home, the consensus up here is to maintain the five. And did you need that in a formal motion, or just a general consensus?
This was basically an information item coming before you. I had been requested to basically report back to the Stormwater Commission, which I will do now then.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Wesley?
The only thing to do when we do the report back, and the thing is, we are, eventually, if there is funding available, we may still look into going for it. But I'm just saying, though, we want the doors to be open, that we may possibly still go that route. But not as right now.
Alderman Wesley, you and I'll be dead before it happens, so...
Okay. That item was for information and discussion only. Next item on our agenda is the information on Ethan Woods Detention Basin status.
I unfortunately come before you again, yet another month down the road, with the same report, that as far as the city knows, there hasn't been virtually no progress on the Ethan Woods development. The last we heard was there was discussion between the developer and the adjoining property owner, but obviously, there's been no resolution to that, to those discussions, at least not any resolution that we're aware of. So at this time, there's basically nothing to report on the status of Ethan Woods, except we have made our mosquito contractor aware of that area, and they will be paying special attention to it this summer, so...
Alderman Tolemy?
We still, we still on Lot Eight, right?
On William Court, is that Lot Eight?
Right, and we're gonna, we're gonna hang on to that for now until ultimately we see what ends up, okay. Thank you.
Thank you for the status. Oh, Alderman Coles?
Why don't we get Cunningham to dig out Lots Six and Seven again, so we have retention in there, because we actually haven't had rain hot enough yet. But I'm afraid, when rain's coming hot enough, Lot Six and Seven, which they filled in, used to have the aerator in, and we used to have a wet bottom there, is going to be, if we have a two-inch rain, a three-inch rain, we're gonna be flooding again.
Well, the elevations are such that, as the system and the water rises in the system, it's going to flow southward. It's not going to flow east and west, not gonna flow north. The detention that was on Lots Six and Seven, which is now, as you said, modified, is so small anyways compared to the watershed, that it essentially had no, you know, appreciable impact. It wasn't the savior out there. It filled up immediately, virtually anyway, so...
Ethan Woods Basin isn't a savior either.
No, right now, it's full of water.
It's full, and it'll always be full until they get something done.
Until they get a resolution.
How can people buy lots there to build houses, which they can't get permits because of the basin not done? How can that be done?
That, I mean, I don't know. That would be an issue between the developer and the buyers, so...
I know, but how can they sell it without having it be done? I don't know.
Mr. Wesley?
I, back up here. On this detention basin, if it is not completed in a year, they have to come back to us. Am I correct? I thought their permit's only good for a year or two. A year. So they would have to come back to us if there ain't no work being done on it. They gotta come back to us. Am I correct? On the whole development. Am I wrong or not?
Well, yes and no. This is a real tricky situation, because the original agreement doesn't involve the city. And then, the way I understand it, and again, I don't have all the facts in front of me, there was a side agreement between the developer and the Hacks, which is one of the big problems that we're having right now. And if the city gets involved in this, then we could be, it might be a point for executive session, let me put it that way, right now. And so, we're just giving you the report as it unfolds, but we'll give you a better update. And when I look at all the, and Gary gets a chance to review everything, unless, no, there's no one here, we'll give you a more up-to-date. But I think it'll be an executive session.
Can I have it on the next meeting, please?
And then also, for the next session that we discussed this, can we also keep in mind the question, and I don't need the answer now or anything, but along the lines of, as Alderman Coles had mentioned, to go in there and dig it out. So, you know, curious to know, if we did wanna go in and dig it out and fix it, because it's a public hazard, what have you, would we be able to send the bill to the appropriate parties, which wouldn't be the city? And I, just for future...
I believe that we could do this, but if we did that, there would be other concerns and problems with that.
Okay, thank you. Item for information only at this point. Next item on the agenda is the Wooddale Park District Pond, and this is a really nice use of property. Mr. Manager?
Oh, no. I'm just waiting for you to...
Oh, okay.
I'll just, I'd just like to say something. I'm all excited, because I'm gonna let Jeff do the report, but what you have before you is the first example of our GIS system, mapping system. And this is the first slide off our new system. And Jeff, you wanna come up and give your report? And Gary will, and I will join in, but we...
Okay, and I was gonna go into all the exciting things, but you know what, I'll let Jeff...
Okay, I didn't know I was doing a report today, but I guess I'll do one anyway, since I did the memo. I've been talking about this with the Park District for a couple months now. This is Wooddale Road, going northbound right here. One of the things we're looking at doing is putting possibly a pier, a fishing pier, right here. We took a depth of the ponds. This main body of water here is two to three feet deep, which would lend nicely to some paddle boats, or something of that sort, some canoes, something like that. And the Park District might be willing to staff maybe some college students or high school students in the summer to maintain the boating pier and things like that. This chain of pond right here is actually a little bit deeper than the bigger pond. There's actually fish in that pond now presently, and I believe right around here is somewhere around 20 feet at one point, and some other areas are like four to five feet. But there's a 20-foot depth in that smaller pond. Over here, Frank, where were we gonna look for the parking? Do you know that?
After going out there, and we had talked about a number of preliminary ideas for parking, we originally looked at possibly being able to tuck some parking back in here. But looking at the topography, it does slope off fairly good from School Street down to the pond. And this area back here is used for this building's detention area, so I'm a little skeptical as to how much actual parking we could get in here. I would see a more realistic scenario of when we improve School Street, doing a third lane, or, you know, a parking lane along School Street, similar to what we had talked about further west for the reservoir site, where maybe some Off Street or Jason Street parking, right along School Street there.
Alderman Tolemy?
One of the things, okay, that, when I've looked at this, and we've talked before about this, one of the things I've always said is that, and I know, you know, one of the problems that the Park District has in the wintertime is finding a place for an ice pond, okay? And I know, because I used to take my kids when they were smaller, we used to go, and we'd go ice skating on that pond. If, at some point down the road, in addition to a pier being put up, if like a shelter, you know, like even if it was just like an open shelter or something, was put up there, I mean, if you go to Bensonville, where Fenton is, and I forget, I don't know the name of the street, but there's a park that's right down the street from Fenton High School, and they have a hothouse-like that they've used, and they use that area over there all, you know, four seasons. I mean, and that ideal, would be ideal for a four-season, you know, park. So, I mean, in your talks with the Park District, make them think about, you know, utilizing that as their ice rink in the wintertime, because, again, it's man-made. I mean, it's, it's beautiful, well, it's man-made, but it's, you know, they don't have to do anything other than just make sure that the ice, when it forms, it's flat. Because I will tell you that there are ridges that do form in that, because of the, because it is so big, that when the wind picks up and it freezes, there are ridges. So they might have to do some minor maintenance on it to smooth it. But that's, that'd be ideal, you know, for winter things, too.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, this is before you tonight for information. As we move along in developing a plan, we wanted to make you aware of it and get your input. Maybe you can go out there and take a look at the, where's the, oh, here it is. You take a look at the area. Actually, when this was first built, and it's not being maintained by the developer right now, there was a path that runs through, or used to run through, to the bike path. And we were thinking of possibly restoring this path. You can see it a little bit better on the actual photo. The focus isn't that good, but it used to be in there, and we were thinking of possibly doing something with that. The interesting thing is, we have no agreement with Forest Creek to maintain this area, but we've been maintaining it. The city crews cut the grass, and they do put some garbage cans out there and clean that up. The Park District, yeah, we've been doing it all these years, but we have no agreement. And one of the things I wanted to ask the committee, if they would, if they would allow us to go ahead and negotiate an intergovernmental agreement with Forest Creek, develop the subdivision, or not the subdivision, the industrial park, a formal agreement and the Park District to allow us to officially use this area and start to develop this area. The Park District was initially very interested, but they don't have any funding, and some of these things can be done with some preliminary, some very lightweight engineering, as far as where to position things and everything. We can do that now with Gary, in-house, relatively easy, so we can move ahead. However, no funding has been allocated, as you know, and in Jeff's memo, he alluded to the fact that we do have some additional tourism money left. So if you would, just kinda think about it, take a look at the, yeah, there are some 50% matching grants available, and we could do some small things, if, you know, if you're interested in this. But it is a very valuable asset to the city of Wooddale. It's what's called a parched water table. It never dries up. Have you ever seen it dry up? No. So it will always be, and it's a relatively safe depth, so that if someone fell out of the boats or something like that, we wouldn't have to worry about people drowning. And that's probably the reason why, in the time that I've been in Wooddale, 35 years, I've never seen it dry up, and I've never heard of anybody drowning on that pond. That's why we had, the police department and the fire department went out there, and they did the depth sounding of the area with a depth finder, to make sure that that was the case. So, are there any other ideas, suggestions, or questions?
Before I call on other, Alderman, one of the, as I'm looking at this picture, and I see that big parking lot, and I realize it's for the industrial buildings, but as we're talking with the industrial park and in the intergovernmental agreement, perhaps we can at least run the idea past them to let us use it on the weekends, the parking lot, so then we would at least have parking when the most amount of people would be using the facility. Alderman Tolemy?
Yeah, I just wanna say, going back to something we discussed earlier tonight, the tax levy, forget about the pension funds for a minute, okay? For the Park District to say they don't have any money, I mean, I would, I would like to know, okay, or should I say, we really need to talk to them about finding money, because when I look at what, on this tax bill we were given, they're getting $284.88. The city of Wooddale's getting $208.56, which seems to me that it's almost $70 more, okay, that the Park District is getting versus what the city's getting. And all I'm saying is that I would hope that, because this would fit in to, and the city shouldn't have to get into the Park District as far as doing that type of thing, but this should fit into their plans. And hopefully, we can work out, and I would strongly recommend and agree to having the city manager go forward with getting an agreement signed with the owner of the property, as well as with the Park District. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second. And the question, Alderman Wesley?
He's pretty much took the whole line here, but I have no problem going forward with this project. I think it will be well worth the project, but again, I don't think the city should fund this whole project. I don't care if it comes out tourism fund. I don't think it should all come out there, because if the Park District is, and you know darn right well, if we had the paddle boats there, the Park District's going to charge for that and get a cut. And don't tell me that ain't gonna happen, because that's what they do in Bensonville, so. I mean, and then if that's the case, then we need our cut, too. I mean, if they aren't going to fund it, then I see no rea, if they aren't going to put any money into this project, I don't see going forward with this, because like Dave summed it up, tax bill proves that we don't have the money, but the Park District's gaining more money. I think it's a great idea, no doubt about it, but they need to come forward, too.
Mr. Manager?
Okay, with your direction, we can perhaps open a more complete dialogue with them, and we will be meeting with them at our intergovernmental meeting, and that's, we could have some informal discussion. They did say they did have staff, and what we could possibly do is consider partnering with them with a grant. In other words, if there's a 50-50 grant, we could each chip in 25-25 to make the 50, and maybe get the project going. Jeff, when is the grant due for this year?
July 1st.
There's a grant due July 1st. We can meet with them and maybe put something together initially. It doesn't have to be anything big. It can be like we talked about, some picnic tables, maybe a pier, something like that, barbecue, and, you know, get it started. The property does need some maintenance. If, and they did, the Park District did say they have staff. They have staff. They just didn't have funds. So maybe we could make the parcel more attractive by, you know, maybe Gary has some ideas, more accessible and a little bit neater, because it has been left pretty much in a natural state. And if people start, you know, gathering there, and going through the woods, they might be tripping over stuff and everything, because the pathway is kind of, kind of covered. And Gary, do you have anything else to add, some ideas?
Yeah, I, you know, not having walked through the woods, I would, you know, maybe we consider having an arborist come out, identify invasive species, and identify, you know, native species, and maybe do a little clearing in there, maybe try to enhance that. As you drive down School Street today, you really don't have very good views, you know, into the lake, and maybe by clearing this, you can improve its quality, getting rid of a few of the scrub trees, and overall, you know, in the end, improve the quality and meander a path through there. And I think this could be, you know, in a very nice, enhanced area. Alderman Tolemy's example of a warming house, maybe in the summertime, the walls would be removed and could be, you know, for a picnic table, you know, a four-season. So, yeah, there's a lot of potential for this little site. It'd be a good amenity for the community.
Alderman Tolemy?
Yeah, I don't misunderstand, I mean, when I was talking about the Park District, because I definitely wanna work with them. And I would consider, if they're, if they have the personnel to put up, you know, to maintain it and everything, to me, that's just as good as the dollars, okay? Because it is, it's still costing them, you know. So whatever we do, I think that we should enter into an agreement with them, but we should also look at making sure that both of us, both them and us, look at the future of this, too, and making it even better by including it, you know, into their next fiscal budget, you know, at some point, so that there would be some funds. And I agree with what Alderman Wesley said. I mean, you know, in Bensonville, they do charge for, to rent the paddle boats, and I'm sure we would, too. I mean, you're not gonna just put them out there and just let anybody use them, you know, a nominal fee, whatever it happens to be. But, you know, as far as who gets that revenue, I mean, you know, you worked it all out, that's irrelevant. What you need to know, though, is that on School Street there, for years, the people that live on the south side of that street have been dumping into that forest preserve. And trust me, I went through this a couple years ago, okay, fought and fought and fought, and found out, got a letter from the owner of that property saying he gave them approval to dump their leaves and dump all their yard waste and stuff in there. So there is a lot of that in that, on that side of the street. So it's gonna have to be real clear, if we take over ownership, that those people on School Street can no longer dump, okay, in that area, because, I mean, I know it would be a lot, there was a lot of leaves, okay, that would be dumped in there.
Mr. Mayor?
I'll join with everybody else. I like the project. As far as possible other ideas, on the path, I think it's part of a Phase Two. We should look at extending the path all the way to the main path of the reservoir, and consider extending it north, up towards the baseball fields and the historical society, to give the kids a safe passage up to all those ball fields. There's a path on the other side, but not a bike path, I know.
Just a little, just a little bit to the north of that last, the top one up there, there is a path that's, that already goes all the way up to, was it middle? Okay. I'm not sure how far it comes down, but I know that there is a path that already goes up.
Yeah, if we can tie into that as part of this project, and then keep going to the historical society, the museum, that'd be great.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, items for future meetings. Item A, I-DOT MFT resolutions, 1996 through 2006. That's June 8, 2006. Item B, financial summary for Bike Path and Bike Bridge, set for June 8, 2006. Item C, commuter parking lot maintenance agreement with Metra, that is scheduled also for June 8, 2006. Item D, RP's for Three Triangle Garden Projects, June 8, 2006. And lastly, item E, 2006 roadway program sidewalk survey, June 8, 2006. Does anyone care to add any items to June 8, 2006? Alderman Tolemy?
Yeah, I'd like to see us put on for future discussion on the possible elimination of the city's wells and water towers. I think specifically, what I'd be looking at is a, the cost savings to the city, as well as the, you know, real benefit analysis. Gary, pros and cons, you know, is it, I mean, if we do it, what potentially could happen? If we don't do it, you know, what's the cost gonna be? I know you had brought, you had mentioned this earlier, and I just think we need to follow through with it.
Exactly. And just to clarify, it'll be elimination, possible elimination of the city's backup wells.
Yes, yes.
Not the towers.
No, 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 I'm sorry, not...
Towers.
Not the water towers, just the wells.
Any other items to add to future meetings? Okay, with that, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, last item. We have the Community Economic Development Committee. I'd like to call to order, let the records reflect that the same people are still present, at about 20 to 10. First, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of April 6, 2000, yeah, April 6, 2006.
Second.
On question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The next item I have is items for future meetings. And at our next meeting, we will be discussing TIF, proposal for Phase One. Anybody have anything else they'd like to add? Nothing? Oh, Mr. Mayor?
At some point, I know we discussed this before, I don't remember what the resolution was, we were gonna talk about hiring a part-time economic development consultant?
Yes. We, kind of... Mr. Manager?
We did talk about that. We did look into that. There was never any direction given to staff to go further. We got into the budget, and we wanted to, it was my understanding, to see how the revenue streams are coming in with the changes. One of the, one of the steps we're taking now in the Community Development Department is to start tracking the revenue and show what we were bringing in based on permits last year compared to this year, so that we can project it out and possibly utilize some of those funds. So since we've just changed some of the rates, and we're just getting that system up and running, we will hopefully have that. We have, and you'll get some more information in your packet, hired a new individual in the Community Development Department. He will start May 30. As a matter of fact, he does have some economic development experience. We are pulling together staff to look at some of these things. The mayor and myself are doing some of these things with, looking at some of the areas and meeting with a lot of developers. So we've started to do this, but we've never formalized that, and if you want us to go ahead with that and formally advertise for a part-time person, we could do that. I would just need some direction and funding for that.
Then I would like to put that on for the next, as well.
Would that be a part-time or full, part-time, right?
Part-time position. Right, at this point, we think part-time.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything? Hearing, nothing else. Let's see.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
On a question, all in favor? On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.